The meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Education for Monday, June 13th is called back to order as our motion to re-enter open session.
What motion is read?
Motion by Mr. Fitch. Second by Mr. Hunt. Those in favor of re-entering open session, if you'd raise your hand. Any opposed? That carries nine zero. In a way of reporting, the tonight's meeting was originally called to order at 4:45. The board voted to immediately go into closed session per General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A1, to discuss confidential student matters in accordance with FERPA regulations. So we'll continue on. We have Reverend Dustin Mace tonight with Buffalo Baptist for our invocation. Reverend Mace?
Let's pray. Our Father God, we call upon you tonight as Creator, as Sustainer, as Defender, as Protector, and as Savior. Lord, your attributes are too many for us to name, and your character too great for us to possibly ever describe adequately. But, Lord, we are here tonight to lift up these men and women who've been entrusted to lead and steward our local schools, and we know their responsibilities have only increased. We know the burden they bear seems to grow more heavy by the week. Lord, we know that they're having to face things and make decisions and face issues that thirty, forty years ago could not have been imagined by school boards. They need your help. Lord, we know that you're a just God. And so, Lord, your wrath is kindled when children are gunned down in their schools. You're a good God, and that means we know that when pandemics make children anxious and take away their parents and guardians, Lord, that your compassion goes out to them. You need your help, Lord, and we ask for an end to these things tonight in Jesus' name. And we know that one day there will be an end, and until then, we ask that you would give this body here tonight the skills and the tools they need to lead. Lord, give them safety, give them unity, give them vision, give them wisdom and guidance, give them courage balanced with compassion. And, Lord, we ask that you would watch over them and over every single school, every single student, every teacher, every principal, every support staff in this county, our state, and our nation. This will be asked in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance, Mr. Hunt?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which sustains us, one nation under God, in the Father, and on earth as one.
Next is special recognition for some of our senior scholarships. Dr. Schell, are you handling that?
Sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Fisher, it's my honor and great pleasure to introduce an incredibly talented, brilliant young lady who is a graduate now of Cleveland County Schools and a future leader of our community. As you know, many young people apply for scholarships across the nation. I am thrilled to report that Hattie Hensley of Shelby High had a full ride scholarship to where, Hattie? University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. So that's big time. Come on up. For any family, please. I told them all this, they had to come up. It takes a village, as you're aware. If you will, come on through, let the board recognize you for this honor. Don't think Eli was able to make it tonight. We're gonna take a picture. Congratulations. Congratulations. Let's grab a quick pic, but also Mitch Hensley would like to just offer a few words as well.
Don't do the picture first.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address you as a proud parent of a recent graduate from Shelby High School. I'm, I can't tell you how proud I am. I'm proud of her and I'm proud of you guys, I'm proud of your administration, I'm proud of the teachers. Fourteen years ago, I moved my family here to Shelby, North Carolina, and she was four years old at the time, her sister was two years old, and at the time, all of my peers were headed to somewhere else rather than Cleveland County Schools. Lots of my, every discussion that I had with lots of my friends at church and everywhere else was about this new school in Rutherford County. And my wife and I talked about it, and we decided that we were gonna stay here in public schools. And we are all in. We're all in. We've been all in, we've been all in with PTA meetings and assignments there, we've been all in with the spaghetti supper, we've partnered with Vacation Bible School at different areas in our county, underprivileged maybe communities in our county. And my daughter has grown from these relationships that she's made, okay? I want to encourage you to find teachers that seek out the kid that might be quiet in the back of the room that's not causing them any trouble. Find teachers and coaches that will find these kids and encourage them to do better and to strive to go outside their comfort zone and ability zone to be able to stretch themselves. I want you to find creative ways to offer intriguing classes, AP classes, that make your students here in Cleveland County more competitive with the rest of the state, but find ways to have AP courses here in your high schools, maybe partner with other high schools or something like that. But I want to tell you, I appreciate the job that you guys do here. Thank you so much, Dr. Fisher, and your team that you put together, and we couldn't be prouder. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mitch.
All right, as you remember, we recognized three remarkable students at our May meeting, and I'd like to just kind of bring that back. We're very proud of Hattie Hensley, also Eli Wilbanks, who could not be here, of Shelby High, Mark Allen of Kings Mountain High School, if you remember, Mark Petrelli of Kings Mountain High, and Eli Robert to Crest High for their academic excellence for working so very hard in achieving these full academic scholarships to their respective universities. We wish them the best, and we expect great things.
Next, I'd like to recognize, do we have any principals or assistant principals with us this evening? How about any teachers or teachers assistants? Mr. Root? Do we have any NCAE representatives or any elected officials? All right. I want to welcome everyone again. Next, we have adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Fitch. Second by Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion on the agenda? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. That carries nine zero. Next is public participation. We do have five folks signed up to speak, so that works out to our fifteen minutes. So we'll continue on with Ms. Marge Hooper.
I'd like to talk to you about a few things. One of them is the closing of Graham and Marion Schools. If anyone missed the county commissioner's forum and their meeting last Tuesday, we learned that there are 3,600 new housing permits that have been approved for Cleveland County. Let me repeat that. Three thousand six hundred new housing permits. But we had a firm that was paid, what, close to half a million dollars to come here and essentially be deceitful to the people of this county and say that we don't have the numbers to keep these two schools open. And since we do not know to this date where the sixty-four million dollars of COVID relief money was spent, we, the people, would like to know exactly where this money went, and the money that will come from the sale of these schools, where is that going to go? So what have you done with what you have had received, and what are you gonna do with what's going to be forthcoming? So you promised that you would be transparent, so where is the money? It comes out to five thousand dollars per student, per child. So certainly, nobody received five thousand dollars worth of anything this past school year. And where is the money going to from the sale of Graham and Marion Schools? We, the people, want to know. You said that you would be transparent, so be transparent and tell us, where is the money? And by the way, thank you for your hard work to help get Danny Blanton on the school board primary, and we'll go on to the elections in November. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Next is Carrie Jordan.
First, thank you for allowing me to speak on this matter. I really hope it's not ignored this time. On May the ninth, 2022, my son, right here, was stabbed at Crest High School twice. The child was not suspended, he was not expelled, he was sent to ISS for the remainder of the year. I want to know why? Just because he's labeled an EC student, that does not excuse that type of behavior. I was notified by Mr. Shields, the principal, on May 11th, two days after the incident. Not once did the nurse assess any wounds or anything, and I'm still getting led, dug out of his leg from both places. No one has reached out except for Danny Blanton, and I've talked to Greg Schultz one time over the month. Mr. Shields tells me I don't have a right to know anything about this. My child was stabbed, I absolutely have a right to know what's gonna happen. As far as this child goes, he has prior convictions, multiple ones. He has current ones pending, and I had to speak with three different attorneys to find one that wasn't already representing him on a case. So I want to know why he's still walking the halls of Crest High School. I want to know why? He was kicked out of elementary school for stabbing a child. He has assaulted his foster parents with baseball bats and perjured his foster mom, that I have permission to say. She is feared for her own safety in her own house because of the kid, and yet he still walks the schools of Crest High School. So I really just want to know why? Why can't he be suspended? Why couldn't he be expelled? That would have put him well over his ten-day suspension and had to be reported to the state. It's about the only reasonable answer I can come up with. And we all know Jeremy Shields doesn't want that to happen. Jeremy Shields is the same principal that refused to report a gun threat to my child directly in writing, and I had to contact authorities, and Danny Blanton is the only one that reached out to me, and he did it on a Saturday morning when he didn't have to. That speaks volumes for him regardless of what anyone up here thinks about him. I don't know all of the procedures you have to follow, and I know there's policies in place for that, but can you, Mr. Queen, look my child in the face and explain to him why his security and his safety is not important at that school? Because he doesn't feel safe there. I don't feel safe with him there. No one does. Because nothing ever happens, and I'd be assured the only thing was they would not be around each other at school. When I picked him up from school a week later, they were standing outside within ten feet of each other. So that was yet another lie on behalf of Mr. Shields. At this point, instead of robo-text for votes, slandering the parents, Mr. Hunt, of the...
Ms. Jordan?
I understand my time is up.
Your time's up, and you're getting out of order.
Make sure you're not speaking to my mother's face when you bash us next time, and do better, Mr. Queen.
Dr. Fisher, is there... Is there a staff member that can meet with Ms. Jordan and get details? Dr. Schell? Okay. If you could step back and talk with Dr. Schell, he'll get some more information. Next is Brian Lawless.
I knew Carrie wouldn't have a whole lot of time, so I actually wanted to follow up upon hers and actually dive right into some of the policies that you guys have in place for your own board here. So let's dive right into these policies. First one is the fair and consistent discipline administration. Cleveland County Board of Education intends to, intends that student discipline policies, procedures, practices be applied fairly and partially and consistently in accordance with law without regard to the student's race, color, national origin, disability, gender, status as an English language learner, or other characteristics prohibited by federal law. Seems pretty straightforward to me on that one. All students should be upheld to these policies. Next few come directly from the Student Code of Conduct. Expectation sixteen, fighting physical aggression, it's a B-level offense. Students enrolled in Cleveland County Schools should expect to attend school in a non-threatening environment. Students are expected to refrain from physical aggression. Aggressive behavior directed towards other students, these behaviors include but are not limited to hitting, shoving, scratching, kicking, biting, stabbing, throwing objects, or any other behavior intended to or reasonably likely to result in a fight or cause physical harm. First offense, ten-day suspension. Second offense, ten-day suspension and possible recommendation for longer. Third is also ten-day suspension and longer suspension on that. Expectation thirty-two, use of a weapon, C-level offense. Using in a threatening or dangerous manner any weapon or other object that can be reasonably, that can reasonably be considered a weapon. The school resource officer actually, in this situation, did press charges on the student and wrote in his report that a weapon was used. For this, ten-day out-of-school suspension, possible recommendation for long-term suspension. Lastly, reporting requirements investigation of misconduct. The principal shall take the following steps in addressing all cases of alleged misconduct as defined above. With that, promptly notifying the parents or legal guardians of the involved students of the finding, actions, and current status of the investigation. Only communication that we ever received from it was Mr. Shields saying, "I will handle it." No disciplinary actions were taken, no further updates were ever given. The "I will handle it" never got handled. There was nothing ever done. We expect better out of everyone involved in that and would like to see much, much better
Next is Ronnie Greer.
A few weeks ago, I went to the Marion celebration. I guess you call it a celebration, and teachers didn't seem to think it was much of a celebration. I was there for about two hours and talked with about six different teachers. I saw you, Mr. Glover there, and Mr. Blanton. Didn't get to go to the Graham closing. I was not aware of when it was, but would have liked to have went. Closing two schools. I was told as a taxpayer that I have a right to ask for the documents of the companies that did their assessment and how much it cost to have these assessments done, but I had to ask the administration. So, Mr. Fisher, I'm asking for those documents, if I could please get them. So I just want to make that publicly known. This information was based on one of the companies that came here and said that our town was not growing. Two months later, 3,600 open permits for building homes in Cleveland County. And I just want to know where this company got their information from. Did they get it from you guys? Because they didn't get it from the county. Second thing is safety in our schools. You know, we get grants for everything from rails to trails, a ten-mile stretch that's unsecured and gonna be nothing but a hazard to the city. Twenty million dollars in grants for that. Four-point-two million dollars in grants for concession stands upgrades. Then we get more money for the auditoriums. I think it was probably just to satisfy the company that is building the auditoriums. But where's the money for safety? In the light of the shootings that happened in Texas, why was that not our first priority? Why were there not a session put together to start discussing what you're gonna do about safety for the twenty-seven schools in Cleveland County? If you can get grants for all this other stuff, you should be able to get grants for that. The last thing is, the Biden administration said the other day that they would hold lunch monies from schools if they didn't teach transgender and LGBTQ classes. Where do y'all stand on that? Do you agree with it? Because I can tell you right now, Cleveland County's not gonna, they're not gonna go along with this. I stand for education, not sexual orientation of our children. That's up to our parents to take care of.
Mr. Greer, your time's expired. Next is Billy Scruggs.
Well, I guess that's another case that Fisher's gonna sweep under the rug again, sweep under the rug. Administration building. During y'all's forum, y'all said y'all was gonna go to the administration building and take out what didn't need to be there. Has anybody left the administration building? Has anybody left? No, you've added to it. Each one of you, during the forum, well, maybe some hadn't, didn't, talked about Fisher so and Alan Norman. He's the one that signed the warrant for the three million dollars. The old school board didn't do anything. Now, y'all are letting him, Buffalo y'all, slide in on y'all too. He's running the show again. When y'all gonna get rid of him? When you gonna get rid of him? You give him a raise? Extend his contract? When you gonna get rid of him? Joel, thank you for going out when you was a deputy and talking to the students about putting pictures on their phones. That you told them that when you took a picture, it always stayed there, no matter if they rested or not, it's always there. So now I think you need to get to the teachers and tell them the same thing, not putting naked pictures on their phone, especially bringing them to school. Mr. Queen, Danny Blanton helped you all through your election, not only you, but Joel, Ronnie.
Mr. Scruggs, that has nothing to do with school board business. If you have any topics that the school board actually handles, we can talk about that. Campaign matters you need to address somewhere else.
Well, let me bring this up. How come we don't have two meetings a month? Is it because people like me comes in and talks, and you don't want to hear them? You don't want to hear them? Danny Blanton brought it up, and Mr. Glover, he piggybacked on it, that they should have two meetings. Should have two meetings a month. And I agree with y'all. They need to have two meetings. As Ron Greer was talking about, the school resources officers. I think Cleveland County Schools has one at every school, but the Bullin Springs, Shelby, Kings Mountain don't have one at every school. That's why they need to get the grants, have those resource officers there. I think maybe one officer takes care of two, two schools. That's not good. That's not good.
Mr. Scruggs, your time's expired.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of the minutes of the May ninth, 2022 business session. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Hunt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitch. Any questions or discussion on those minutes? Those in favor of the May ninth business meeting minutes, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. Next is approval of the minutes of the May eleventh special call meeting to discuss the auditoriums. What's the pleasure of the board?
Leave to approve.
Motion by Mr. Alfris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Blanton?
Yes, I voted for it, but I was against the price, because we should have reached out and got other prices.
We're talking about the minutes.
I'm talking about the minutes. That was what was brought up. I said I was against the price.
Thank you. Those in favor of the minutes, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? Mr. Blanton, I didn't see, what was your vote? Was it for or against?
I voted for it. I voted for the auditorium.
Is your vote in favor for approving the minutes or not?
Yes.
All right. Next is approval of the minutes of the May eleventh closed session, again discussing auditoriums. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Glover.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hunt. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? That carries nine zero. We'll move on to committee reports. First is finance and personnel. Mr. Shores?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Personnel Committee met on May 27th, and Karpinski presented Budget Amendment Number Four to the Committee for Review and Approval. Mr. Karpinski provided a thorough review of the amendment, as well as discussed the need for budget amendments throughout the rest of the year. A few clarifying questions about fines and forfeiture money, as well as Kids Around funding, were asked by committee members. Mr. Karpinski stated that his district has received approximately 375,000 of fines and forfeiture money this year to date. He also embodied a handout regarding the Kids Around 2021-2022 fiscal position. The district has supplemented the Kids Around program $125,000 so far this year, and depending on May and June revenues and expenses, we may have to add another amount to get it through June the 30th of 2022. The Committee unanimously approved Budget Amendment Four, and will be recommended to the full board at tonight's meeting. Mr. Karpinski then presented the 2022-23 interim budget. The interim budget will allow the district to begin 2022-2023 fiscal year. Once the state budget is approved by the General Assembly, Mr. Karpinski and the finance team will complete the 2022-23 Cleveland County Schools budget. After state, local, and federal budgets are ratified, the 2022-23 beginning, 2022-23 budget resolution will be presented to the Finance and Personnel Committee and subsequently will be presented to the Board of Education for adoption. The Committee unanimously approved the 2022-2023 interim budget, and it will be recommended to the full board for adoption at tonight's meeting. Dr. Fisher gave brief ESAR update and gave the committee members information on the district's ESAR spending. This information has been posted on the district's website. Dr. Fisher also recommended to the Committee that the purchase order for CINC law be extended above the $75,000 spending limit as described in the board's policy. The May and June invoices will push the legal service fees beyond $75,000 for the fiscal year. The Committee unanimously supported the recommendation for the 2021-22 fiscal year and pre-approved the extension beyond $75,000 for the 2022-23 fiscal year. This recommendation will be made to the full board tonight. And out of new business, Ms.... In item new business, Ms. General for Wampler highlighted board policy 7940. The Committee discussed and supported the policy as written. With no other business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Friday, the 24th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. And Mr. Chair, if I could just take a moment, I just feel like I need to share this, that the Cleveland County has the Finance Chair, and I've said this many times before, I've learned a whole lot that I didn't realize before I ever got on this board, that all of our monies come from commissioners, state, or federal government. We, as a board, do not have any tax authority. And I know sometimes we get blamed for this or that, or needing money for this or that, but we, as a board, do not have any taxing authority. All of our monies come from the county commission, the state, or the federal budget, and there is a lot of misconfusion out there in the public, I think, and I just wanted to say that, that, just to educate some folks that may not understand completely everything that goes on.
Okay. The first action item out of Finance and Personnel is Budget Amendment Four. Mr. Karpinski, I understand there were some slight changes since the Committee. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We received additional state dollars and some DC dollars that were in the budget.
Okay. And that budget was part of our packet. So, since there were some changes, I'll ask for a motion to approve Budget Amendment Four. Motion by Mr. Hunt. Second by Mr. Fitch. Any questions on Budget Amendment Four? And just to clarify, this balances our books and gets everything in order to finish out the year. There's a possibility of a Budget Amendment Five, but we'll know that at a later date. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor of Budget Amendment Four, if you'd raise your hand? That carries 9-0. Next is the 22-23 Interim Budget. Since the county and state budgets have not been passed, this gets us started July 1 and gives us some means to operate until those budgets are passed. This does come from Committee as a recommendation for approval. Any questions or comments?
Let me just make a comment going off of what I just said, that the reason there's so many amendments to this is we receive monthly deposits of money from those agencies that I mentioned. We just, we don't know sometimes, just to be honest, and I mean, I just want to get this off my chest, we don't know what's coming. And then all of a sudden, we'll get a check from the state or the feds. We're having to play, that man back there, Mr. Karpinski, has a, I told him out in the hall, I admire what he does, because he has to play the guessing game, because we just don't, we don't ever know what the state or the feds are going to send us. And so we're playing a lot of guesswork here, but we have to guess what we're going to do in hopes that we get the money. And I just want to say that, that, you know, again, I appreciate what you do, Mr. Karpinski. This is a finance in school systems is something very unique.
Any other questions or comments on the interim budget? Mr. Blanton?
Yes. That's another reason that we need to go back to two meetings a month, so that we can have a workshop that all the board members hears everything completely of what comes from Mr. Karpinski about our finances and our budget. That's the reason I feel that we should go back to the workshop. I do not have a problem with the committees, but we still need the workshop where that if the public wants to come, they're able to come, and they can hear everything that's going on about our transactions too. And that's being transparent. And being transparent to the rest of the board members. So I'm still in favor of this going back to two meetings a month.
Well, we need to keep the discussion to the interim budget.
Okay, you've made a question to me in my letter that you always willing to let me...
You're out of order. The motion on the floor is to approve the interim budget for '22-23. We need to keep our discussion to that.
Well, I'm trying to keep it to that, but I'm trying to make it to where people, the public, knows exactly what we're doing.
That's a whole separate matter. We're keeping the discussion. And Mr. Williams, if you keep, this is your warning, if you keep interrupting, you'll be asked to leave. I said if you keep interrupting and disturbing a public meeting, you'll be asked to leave. Got it? All right. Any further questions on the interim budget? All right, those in favor of the interim budget, if you'd raise your hand? That carries 9-0. Next is the CINC Law Firm Extension. This extends the PO to beyond $75,000, which is the spending limit for staff, and this will apply for the current year and next year. This does come from Committee as a recommendation. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries 9-0. Next, we have the NCAT Faculty Own Loan Contract. Dr. Fisher, can you present that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we do have a proposal from NCAT. NCAT is the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teachers to employ one of our teachers as really an NCAT employee. We've done this type of arrangement before with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. This is the first time with NCAT. The proposal would have the employee remain a part of Cleveland County Schools and employ Cleveland County Schools. However, NCAT would pay their salary, they would reimburse the full salary, benefits, all expenses to Cleveland County Schools, and then we'd pay the employee. The employee would actually work for NCAT, would be an employee of NCAT, but would be, receive their check and everything from Cleveland County Schools. As you can see, the contract amount's kind of a little bit different of a contract, because typically we get a service and we pay money. This one is the person doing the service, and we're getting the money to be able to really reimburse their pay. This does not cost, will not cost Cleveland County Schools really any money. We do, we would be able to collect indirect costs at approximately $5,000 for this. Being that it is a contract and exceeds $75,000 with NCAT, we just ask the board's approval.
Any questions to Dr. Fisher on this contract? Yes, sir. Mr. Blanton?
Was this put up for any employee that would like to apply?
This is a request from NCAT that they wanted to contract with this employee.
This particular employee?
That's correct.
Now, in other words, it wasn't open up to the public?
It's not our job, it's not our thing, it's a particular request from NCAT.
Well, what is all of these questions right here? The person has to have a minimum master's degree, at least five years' experience, successful training?
That's from NCAT. This is an ability that we're allowing one of our employees to work for NCAT, and they're going to reimburse all of the costs and expenses.
Why are they telling us all of this if they are doing the hiring?
That's just put, they're just giving us that information, Mr. Blanton.
Any other questions? This did not have a chance to go before committee, so what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Y'all pick one over there. I'll pick Mr. Glover. Second by Mr. Fitch. Any further questions on the motion? Those in favor of approving the contract, if you'd raise your hand? That carries 9-0. Next is the Personnel Report. So this includes our standard Personnel Report and the administrative contract renewals. That includes several principals and vice principals. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve Personnel Items Recommended by the Secretary.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Glover, second by Mr. Blanton. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries 9-0. Next is Educational Programs. Mr. Umpfress.
So the Education Programs Committee met on May 27th. Rhonda Benfield presented the draft Cleveland County Schools CTE Local Plan to the Committee. Mrs. Benfield brought both the local plan and funding application before the Committee. Both the plan and the funding application are action items that require board approval. A CTE Needs Assessment was conducted between October and March, and the plan was written between March and May. Next year will be the implementation of the plan. Highlights from the CCS CTE program from CTE events from 2022, 21-22 were shared and are included as below. The highlights for '22-23 is we're adding drone technologies, teaching as a profession, tech and engineering, food and nutrition labs, VR headsets for middle schools, CTE internships, youth apprenticeships, more credentials, annual safety inspections of shop areas, and we're also going to be doing targeted services for homeless children. The CCS CTE Local Plan and Funding Application were unanimously supported by the Committee and will be recommended for full board approval at tonight's meeting. Tamara Goforth presented some draft edits to the Cleveland County School Board Policy Mrs. Goforth shared proposed changes to these policies due to the fact that we're starting to digitize cumulative records. The Committee unanimously agreed to the draft edits, and the policy will be referred to the Policy Committee. Mr. Gilmore gave an update on how our PALS program has been embraced by community partners such as Sheriff's Department, the Boys and Girls Club, the Mooney Library, the YMCA, educational sororities and fraternities, and a number of barber shops. Some partners are donating money for book bundles for book nooks, and some partners are teaming with a specific school to read with the children. Mr. Gilmore was asked by the Committee to present a PALS update at this meeting, however, it slipped through the cracks and we did not get Mr. Gilmore on the agenda for tonight. So we will have him next month do that. Paula Pillar presented several Head Start and Preschool documents to the Committee as action items requiring board approval. The Committee unanimously supported the Head Start documentation and recommended that all updates to these documents be approved by the board at tonight's meeting. As part of the Committee's STEM discussion, conversation was had regarding having a district-wide science fair. The first step would be identifying what progression is available for winners of the science fair for our high school students. Additional conversation took place on bringing back the Science Olympiad at the middle school level and perhaps at the high school. Dr. Scholl asked if this could be a STEAM discussion instead of STEM. So STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. Mr. Scholl's requested that we make that science, technology, engineering, arts, and math discussion and include the arts in future committee meetings. This discussion will be reviewed and additional information presented to the Committee at our next meeting. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Education Programs Committee meeting is scheduled for Friday, June 24th, at 10:30.
Thank you, Mr. Umpfress. There are two action items in the educational programs. First is the CTE Local Plan and Funding Application. That does come from Committee and recommended for approval. Any questions or comments regarding the CTE plan? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries 9-0. Next are the Head Start action items. This is the standard reporting the Head Start has to do for their funding source, that goes back to the federal government. That does come from Committee for Approval. Any questions or comments? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? That carries 9-0. Next is Operations Committee. The Operations Committee met on Friday, May 27th, at 9:00. Dr. Wampler and Chip Childers presented the Capital Projects Report to the Committee as an informational item. Dr. Wampler presented several items to the Committee for approval. The Committee unanimously supported all the items for the projects below and to be recommended to the board for full approval. First is the Shelby High School Window Replacement Project for $218,690. That would be paid for with ESER funds. Burns Middle School Cooling Tower Project for $97,158. I believe that comes out of our standard capital fund. Shelby High School Stadium Lighting Project for $100,855. That comes out of the SCIF grant, which is the 4.9 for athletic upgrades. Crest High School Stadium Lighting Project, that was originally estimated to be $154,000. I've got exact numbers on that in just a minute. Kings Mountain High School MEP Project, a new switchboard purchase for $121,818.18. That'll also be paid for with ESER funds. Shelby High School MEP Project, need an additional distribution section for the switchboard. That's a sole source approval for $52,365.80. That'll be paid for with ESER funds. Far alarms for the mobile units at the four high schools during the heating and air replacements. That is a sole source approval with Johnson Controls. That amount is $77,995.29. That will also be paid for with ESER funds. Dr. Wampler provided an overview of CMTA's HVAC project and distributed an anticipated timeline of work at our four high schools. Dr. Wampler stated that bids are to be received and open for the glazing portion of the project on June 8th. Daniel Sherman updated the Committee on the Status of the Shelby High School Girls Softball Batting Cages. The site work is complete and the work is progressing well. An estimated completion time is the end of July. David Pless presented a list of items of surplus from our Kids Around Program. Mr. Pless commented to the Committee that there would be additional items for surplus in the near future. A recommendation was made to approve the list as surplus items, as well as any remaining Kids Around items that would fall under the board's policy for surplus. The Committee unanimously supported declaring all the items as surplus and will recommend for approval. Mr. Jamie Courier provided a child nutrition update. Our CEP schools will remain unchanged from prior to COVID. As a reminder, school lunches will return to paid status for next school year. Students attending CEP schools are not charged for lunch. Students attending non-CEP schools must pay unless they qualify for free or reduced lunch. Students at non-CEP schools will need to complete a free or reduced lunch application, and lunch prices for the '22-23 school year remain unchanged. With no other business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Operations meeting is scheduled for Friday, June 24th, at 9:00. We have several action items out of Operations. First is approval of a purchase of a switchboard for Shelby High School. This is an ABB switchboard from State Electrical Supply. Again, that amount is $52,365.80. Comes from Committee Recommended for Approval. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Blanton?
Was they not going to have to have any switchboard or any upgrades at Burns or Crest when these, when our work takes place there for the air conditions and all of that? Because if we're ordering these, why aren't we not, they said that's the reason we needed to order them.
I don't believe there's any need for, I think...
They're not, we're not going to have to have no upgrades?
Not to my knowledge. We're ordering what CMTA has asked us to preorder so that we can get it here on time. Switch gears have a 10-month lead time right now.
I know, but what I was getting at, if we're going to have to have it there, at those places, I can't see how we're not going to be able to have to have it there when we're adding the auditoriums and we're doing all of this new air conditioning work and stuff there. I thought Burns and Crest would...
Some of that's already included, they got their, JIM's had air conditioning, things were upgraded then, and then there will be, I expect there will be whatever upgrades are required for the auditoriums.
Well, I was just getting at it for that long of a period of time that they've got to be upgrades on them switchboards, that it looks like it's going, it'll have to have it there too.
We can have Dr. Wampler call and verify.
All right.
Any questions on the Shelby switchboard? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries 9-0. Next is Shelby High Windows. This replaces 79 windows at Shelby High School. Did receive two bids. The lower bid was with commercial glass and mirror, and that bid amount is $218,690. This will be paid for with ESER funds. But I believe this is outside our original CMTA contract, so this is in addition to that. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments?
There's a pretty big difference between the win and bid and the one that did not win. I mean, did they get everything covered under that? That's a over $100,000 difference from first to second, so.
We've seen that much across the board on various operations bid, even the batting cage. I think there was $75,000 or $80,000 difference between the two bids. That's not uncommon these days.
Huge difference. I'm not debating it, it's just.
Right, right.
I'm going back to Burns and Crest, where's the windows there?
That's in, that has been bid, and those bids came back on June 8th. I've not seen the results of those, but there are glazing replacements in the works for Crest and Burns. Any other questions? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand, that carries nine zero. The Crest and Shelby Stadium Lights. To give a little history on this, the American Legion requested to replace the baseball lights at Shelby High School. We agreed for them to do that if they would relocate those lights to the tennis courts at Shelby High School. For whatever reason, there was electrical mismatch there that those lights would not work at the tennis courts. So the American Legion is buying new lights for the Shelby High School tennis courts at no cost to Cleveland County schools. So now we have good lights left over from the baseball field, and there's enough lighting there to light Shelby High School and Crest High Schools football fields. Those two were the worst as far as lighting, candle power goes, and our recent survey was down a couple of years ago. So we can relocate those lights to Shelby and Crest football fields. They'll be in compliance with the new lighting standards. This contract, this proposal is for Musco to move those lights. Musco is the original installer. They are on state contracts, so we don't have to get bids. And if Musco moves the lights, we maintain our warranty, which is good until August of 2036, and I believe we still have one free light bulb change and all of that, so. Did I get everything, Dr. Wampler? Okay.
What is that price?
We're getting there. So for Shelby High School to relocate those lights and install those, the bid from Musco is $94,855 plus a $6,000 contingency for a total of $100,855. I believe a typical football stadium somewhere in the $350,000 range if you start from scratch. At Crest High School, again, the bid's from Musco. It's higher because a new control panel will be, need to be purchased for Crest. That bid's for $139,425, has a $15,000 contingency, so the total on that is $154,425. We can take those separately or, no, both of these come out of the SCIF grant, which is the 4.9 million that was for press boxes, concession stands, lighting, miscellaneous athletic upgrades.
I have a question there.
Okay.
We're gonna be using the money up on these lights and not get the press boxes built in the bathrooms?
We don't know what the press boxes are gonna cost yet.
Well, should we not get those numbers before we spend all the money?
Well, when you can get two football fields lit for $250,000 instead of $700,000, I think it's a good deal. We're, we're having a cost avoidance of half a million dollars if we do it right now.
Or have somebody break their neck falling down them steps at the press boxes?
All right, let's take these separately. Shelby High School Project for $100,855. All in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? Carries eight to one. The Crest High School Football Stadium Lighting for $154,425. All those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? That carries eight to one.
It's not that I'm against it.
Next is the Burns Middle Cooling Tower.
The bathrooms.
The bid on that, we did receive two bids. The low bid is with pipe, heating and air. That bid is $89,658 with a contingency of 7,500, so the total project price is $97,158. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand, that carries nine zero. Next is the Kings Mountain High School Switchboard. We did receive two bids on this one. The low bid is a square D switchboard from Schneider Electric. The bid price is $119,318.18, $2,500 contingency for a total project of $121,818.18. That comes from committee recommended for approval. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand, that carries nine zero. Kids Around Surplus. There are several items on that list. There's a few tricycles, if any of you need one. Any questions or discussion on those surplus items? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand, that carries nine zero. Last is fire alarms for the mobile units. These are for the mobile units that'll be installed at the four high schools for the heating and air changes. This is a sole source contract with Johnson Controls because that's who we already use for our fire alarm controls. This bid is for $77,995.29, and that will cover Burns, Crest, Kings Mountain, and Shelby. Any questions or discussion? I did fuss with the fire marshal this morning to try to get out of it, and he wouldn't let me, so. That does give communication between the mobile units and the schools so that if something happens in one or the other, the other location knows. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand, that carries nine zero.
Mr. Chair, may I ask on operations, I hope I'm not out of order, the Shelby High Windows, when will they be completed and, or started and completed? And the stadium lights, what's the start date on that and finish date on that?
Dr. Wampler?
The stadium lights are supposed to be during the summer. They go into early fall, they should be completed before the end of summer.
Okay.
They're sitting above.
It'll probably go through the school year?
I think our hope is that we will get that done during the summer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Dr. Fisher?
I believe that the lights, the baseball fields should be coming out today, and so they're probably in that process to be started pretty soon.
Make sure that would be done before the season. Don't want them to sit there and be damaged somewhere for months.
All right, next is our Policy Committee Report. Mr. Umpers?
The Policy Committee met on May 17th at noon. Dr. Fisher gave an update on Policies 4318, 4342, and 4334. These policies were discussed in depth at the April meeting. Dr. Fisher highlighted the updates the committee agreed upon and noted that the revised policies would be on the agenda for a first read at tonight's meeting. Jonathan Sink provided an overview of the public records law and the district's responsibilities regarding public records requests. Mr. Sink provided a draft paragraph to be inserted into Policy 5070 slash 7350. The committee members discussed and unanimously supported the addition of this paragraph into the district's public records policy. The revised policy will be on the June 13th, tonight's board agenda for a first read. Dr. Fisher highlighted the district's process for collecting and responding to public records requests. The committee was supportive and appreciative of the district's efforts. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for June 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Umpers. There are four policies on the list for first read. The first one actually has three policy numbers, 4334, 5035, and 7345, and that is the use of drones. The next one is Policy 5070 slash 7350, is public records retention, release, and disposition. Third is Policy 4342, student searches. And last is 4318, use of wireless communication. And I believe those policies are on board docs with proposed changes in red for anyone that would like to look at those. Next is our Safety Committee. Mr. Fitch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Safety Committee met on Wednesday, June 8th, 12 o'clock. The meeting was called to order, Rodney and Porter provided the committee with several district safety updates, including information from the end of year school, resource officer training, and some district data regarding gaggle alerts and safety protocols. Stephen Fisher reiterated the importance of the positive relationship with Cleveland County schools has with all of our law enforcement partners and bragged on the great work every day by our school resource officers. Dr. Fisher highlighted several of the district's best practices regarding school safety, including the district's assessment protocols. In another committee meeting, Ryan Etheridge and Terry Putnam gave a presentation of district's protocols and procedures that were in place. Dr. Fisher highlighted some of the district's data and work done by district administrators. Dr. Fisher also discussed the importance of school safety and the need for safety to be a part of all of our discussions. The district includes a school safety component in every principal's meeting and will begin to incorporate safety reminders into the weekly communicator updates. Dr. Fisher reported that all schools had their school safety plans entered into the state system, and the district was 100% compliant with all safety drills. Members of the committee, school staff, and law enforcement partner discussed the importance of items such as doors and window security, ensuring doors were locked and operating properly, and best ways to check and document disinformation. The district and committee will be looking into enhanced safety assessment procedures over the summer and have new procedures in place for August. Matt Harden and Jason Harris were present at the committee meeting from the North Carolina Office of Probation and Parole. Mr. Harden explained the role of Probation and Parole Office and how they could assist with school safety. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety has instructed these officers to be in schools at least twice a week. Dr. Fisher has already communicated this information to school principals, and Officer Harden and Officer Harris will be reaching out to the school resource officers in the near future. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Safety Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 29th at 12:00 noon.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Next, we have our Superintendent's Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I don't have 62 minutes worth of updates tonight, but I do have a couple very important things I want to bring to the board this evening. First, and it's appropriate, good transition from Mr. Fitch's Safety Committee Report. We did meet, I guess it was last week, with the Safety Committee, had a great conversation, Mr. Glover, Mr. Blanton, and all that committee, and multiple folks from our law enforcement partners. You know, I think as we continue to take in all the things that have happened in our country over the last several weeks, our thoughts and prayers go out to all those impacted. But school safety, you know, just again, is brought to the reminder, it's important. It's important to our Board of Education, it's important to school staff, it's important to parents, it's important to community. Over the last week, I know you guys have, and I have as well, had many conversations with folks about school safety. I've had lots of conversations with parents and teachers and staff about being appreciative of the school safety efforts we've got, looking back over the things that we've done over the last several years to make our campuses as safe as possible. School safety is a multi-faceted approach and process. It's not a one thing to do. I mean, schools are complex, elaborate organizations, and we have, you know, right now have 29, this past year had 29 brick and mortar campuses, and many of those campuses have multiple buildings. And so the integration of all that process is multifaceted, and there's different things that we have to address when we look at school safety. It's just not one, one item, and I'll get to those in just a minute. But school safety is also a system of continuous improvement, and I talk about using the word "system" a lot because it is, it's a system of things. It's multiple things working together. We highlighted the Safety Committee, the great work done by our school resource officers, the great community partners. Now we have additional community, law enforcement agencies being involved with that. So it is a system of things that have to work all together, and that system is one of continuous improvement. We continue to enhance our buildings. I can remember back at the beginning of my teaching career prior to Columbine, and the things that we do differently and the things that we're constantly improving about our school system, making our buildings healthy and safe for our students. And then it's a collective effort of complex systems. And when I think about collective work, you know, the school system, we take that role very seriously. From an administrative perspective, that's something that we do to incorporate in our principal meetings, and we have plans to incorporate those things even more as we continue to learn. But it's a collective effort, not just the school system. It's collective more than just our school resource officers. It really is a community effort to make sure that we continue to make sure that our schools, our students are healthy and safe as well as our staff. We do, and again, I'm highlighting several things that were discussed in our Safety Committee meeting, but we have phenomenal school resource officers. We have an unbelievable partnership with all local law enforcement partners, you know, from the Sheriff's Office to Kings Mountain Police, Shelby Police, and Bullen Springs Police Department, Department of Public Safety, Highway Patrol. We're blessed with that relationship, that working relationship with our resource officers. Attention to building security. We have to continue to make sure we're paying good attention to our building security. Those are things, as we look at Capitol Projects and things that hit in that safety realm, those are things that we continue to have to make sure we're focused in on. Our safety plans and protocols. Our schools are compliant with the entering of their school safety plans into the state system. Dr. Scholl monitors that. We also, we are also 100% compliant in with our safety drills. That's something we continue to do. Dr. Scholl keeps track on that and makes sure that we are compliant with those plans and protocols. Assessments and interventions, this is a big one that sometimes goes unnoticed, but the things that we're doing from a daily basis that makes sure we're intervening on things that before they grow to be a huge safety protocol or safety incident. The See Something, Say Something app, we've talked about that before. You've seen that in the news with certain school districts that are neighbors to us, just going through that process. We see Something, Say Something for several years. It is Anonymous Reporting Act app. Gaggle, we get a tremendous amount of traffic on Gaggle that monitors the interactions of our students on our network. Our threat assessment protocol is something that we've been working with over the last three years. Many of you have heard those presentations in our Safety Committee that are working through that, that our protocols are really good, they're in place, and they're working in our, in our school district. The next component is student services, the work that our school counselors, social workers, mental health professionals, and others do with our students every day. We hear the challenges that not only schools, but our society has with mental health and the work that's being done there. And then the final component that I, that I bring to you tonight to really focus on school safety is Team CCS, and it's really the culture and climate that we have. It's a trusting climate, it's a climate of relationship building where people feel comfortable talking to one another. If there's a concern, they bring that up. You know, it's not one of really discouraging that, but it is a climate and a culture of conversation and making sure we're taking care of one another. So as we look about school safety, it's a large gamut of things that we have to consider, and you just can't do one or two things and say, well, we've done this one thing, our campus are safe. It's a lot of stuff that needs to go into that process. It's a long-term process that we have to continue to, not just with our buildings, but with our students and our staff as well. I've gotta pause right there, Mr. Queen, and see if there's any questions related to school safety before I go into the next topic.
Any questions from the board?
If there are any way that we can get any, start working on some grants, I think we need to start working and make sure that we've got the resource officers in every school. I know that our county Sheriff's Department, they've got one in every school, but Kings Mountain, Shelby, and Bullen Springs does not have one in every school, and I think we need to be working, and when school starts back, that we can sort of try to work out that we've got an officer in every school instead of sharing officers.
And speaking of grants that we'd like to mention, and Mr. Blanton, I think you should know that you've been a part of the committee, we have multiple grants that we're currently involved in, including in that is a COPS grant. We've got multiple Safe Schools Grants through the state. We have a Project Aware Grant, and some of the SAMSA Grants that deal with some of the other things. So we are involved in lots of grants from the area of school safety, but we're always open and looking for additional opportunities that come open.
I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Blanton said. In our, in our committee, Safety Committee meeting, we had Kings Mountain Police Department there and also the Probation and Parole and Sheriff's Office represented. It's not only a issue with money, there's an issue with, with folks wanting to get into law enforcement. So it's not a, it's not all about money. We get money, we're gonna have a bunch of resource officers in schools because Kings Mountain Police Department is short-staffed now. They brought this to the table with us, and they've had one application in the last three months. And they're, they're, they don't have enough. And they're, they don't have enough resource officers right now, so they're trying to work folks overtime, part-time, and that type of stuff. So it's not just a money issue. I want people to be aware of that, that there's not a lot of folks wishing to go into the law enforcement profession at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Humphreys?
Yeah, Dr. Fisher, one thing I was going to mention, just a question actually. So in reviewing the COPS grants application, a number of different agencies, that's open to multiple agencies, the school system being the less of all of them. I wonder, is it possible, and Rodney, you may know this also, for different agencies in the same county to apply for those grants simultaneously? Okay. And that's something maybe we will look into, talk Allen, Jeff, and company, checking to that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Well, then, even if the Sheriff's Department's got an extra person, could they, could they supply and help Kings Mountain or Shelby out if they've got an extra officer?
I think, Mr. Blanton, those are all things, as we work through this summer process, we're in conversations with, determine what makes sense. There's several, on the surface, there's several barriers to some of that, but we have some time to work through those processes to make that process work and to get to a place where we want to go. So, you know, again, as I illustrate, there's just not a single easy answer, but it is a process that we work through to make sure we continue to make our campuses safe. And I would say, you know, having resource officers on our campus is great, they are, it's a great safety resource, but we also have to understand there's other safety resources that we have to attend to. You know, in addition to that, we've got to make sure we're rail-rahling in our safety protocols. All right, the next part of the update, I'd like to update you with school facilities. Obviously, a lot of things are proving, that you proved tonight, really with probably bullet number two, but the bullet number one that's noticeable from a construction standpoint is the auditorium projects at Burns High School, Crest High School are underway. That's a long time coming and a great accomplishment there. I forwarded you a letter that we got today from a lady who's lived in the Burns community for a long time. I don't know that lady, but it was really heartwarming to read that and to, you could almost sense in her writing the appreciation for the auditoriums in that community. The HVAC work is beginning, mobile units will be on site for classes in August. I say all those things, I say our high school campuses are changing, and especially the campuses at Burns and Crest. So we ask for everyone's patience and understanding during this time of progress. Lots of things going on on those campuses. In just a minute, I'm going to show you an error review of some of the things, if you've not had the opportunity to be by one of those schools. But as we get through the summer, as we focus in on the beginning of school in August, whether it's from an athletic standpoint or just the opening of school, we, you know, we'll try to do a good job of really communicating things and changes with that. If people are visiting that school, especially right near Crest, that front entrance is closed, you need to use the back entrance and drive up there. Just be aware, there's lots of moving parts on those campuses at this time. And part of our, you know, whether it's an evaluation project throughout what we do in Cleveland County Schools and Staff, we always have an opportunity for artifacts, and so I believe we have a couple artifacts, or an artifact that shows you some progress being made on campuses now. Burns High School a couple weeks ago. Notice that property there. And now look at it now. Remember, that'll be the drive for student drop-off and student parking will come up that area there. Looking at really right there where that auditorium's going to sit in 12 to 18 months. That's what it looks like now. Help you for front parking in the school. Obviously, some changes on our campus, excited about that, and we'll try to update the board and everyone, keep the community informed of changes as we go, especially as we get close to August and we get folks close to being on campus. Just a few other updates, summer is here. Graduations were a huge success, and I appreciate all the work from our school staff and our entire school community. Summer school began today and continue through the month of June at our elementary, intermediate, middle, and high schools, different timelines, but we'll have summer school going on throughout June. Two items that you have, the rail trail, letter of support, and then board action needed on mask is the final part of superintendent's update.
Okay, thank you. All right, we do have two action items here. First is the rail trail grant application. I was approached by Mayor Stan Anthony with the City of Shelby a few weeks ago. He indicated that the city was applying for a RACE grant for the Phase II of the rail trail. That grant's just shy of 25 million, and part of the grant application process is they do ask for community support from different groups in the community. So he asked if the board would consider a resolution or letter in support of that grant application. That's in your packet. No calls to the school board, is just simply asking for support for the grant application. Mr. Blanton?
There was no call for the resolution for the school calendar neither, that helps every last child in our schools. And the City of Shelby was the only one that would not sign a resolution for us as school board. The City of Shelby would not sign it for the making our calendar for those kids, children that take their exams before Christmas and after. And then they asked us for a grant, sign a resolution for a grant for rails trails when we need money to make our schools safer. I think us as a board needs to ask them about getting on board with us about the safety of our schools.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment. When this first came out, I was totally against it. Being in law enforcement, I just felt like it was going to be a new haven for crime. But I called a city councilman today, can't go into all the details because it would take forever, but after talking with them, I feel like this is in the best interest for Cleveland County. And as I said, I was very opposed to it at the beginning, but there's just some things that is going to make Shelby, I think, a little bit better.
Any other questions or comments? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Glover. Any further discussion? Those in favor of approving the letter in support of the rail trail grant application, if you'd raise your hand? I'm sorry, I missed over here. Six, okay. Those opposed? Okay, that carries six to three. Next, we have Senate-
Who was the other one? And who else?
Senate Bill 654 requires us to vote on our mask policy every 30 days, so we need to entertain a motion to either leave it like it is, because we do have, leave it like it is, or change something, because we do have summer school taking place.
I'll make a motion that we leave it as it is, option.
Motion by Mr. Blanton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shores. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. Let's see, board member comments. Mr. Fitch, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Hunt? Mr. Glover?
No, sir.
Mr. Humphreys?
I was going to bring this up during the safety part, but I felt like I might have been a little out of order with some of the things I'm going to say. What I'm going to say, some people may not like, but it's the truth. So I feel like it's best I just tell the truth. I retired from law enforcement after 30 years. In 1998, I was a school resource officer when Columbine occurred. I was a school resource officer for four years after that. For the rest of my career, until I retired in 2020, I supervised the school resource officer program. I spent a lot of time in Salemburg and Edneyville, North Carolina, completing the 400 hours necessary to complete the Certified School Resource Officer Certificate that's offered by the North Carolina Justice Academy. I spent over a week in Charlotte at the FBI office studying active shooters. And one of the top things that the FBI stated, and as we learn, well, number one, if you look at all these active, majority of them, I won't say all of them, they have one thing in common. They're either going to go shoot up something and kill themselves, or they expect to be shot by the police. They're willing to die for their cause. The other thing, the FBI, and back then, I don't know about now, if they take over the investigation, they will not release the shooter's name. Because so many children that don't have home environments that are what we call good, give up hope, and so they feel one way of getting recognized is, I'll go down in a blaze of glory. So one way to do that is what? Go shoot up a school, go shoot up a grocery store, whatever. I can ask anybody in this room, probably tell me the name of the active shooter in Texas. Most of you might could tell me pretty quick, but if I ask you to name me one of the 18 kids, they probably couldn't, nobody could tell me one of their names. We are sensationalizing this stuff, people. Everybody wants to jump on Congress, wants to jump on commissioners, educators, and all this, when I never hear anybody complain about media putting their faces up, making them heroes in their minds. When are some people going to start complaining to the media? Quit doing it. I'm saying it out loud now to all the media that can hear me, stop it. You're making these people out to be heroes. Abandon AR-15s, is that going to stop it? No. Putting a school resource in every school, is that going to stop it? No. It's not. And I don't pour just putting a school resource officer in a school just because to have one there. I supervise them. You got to have a special person to work with children. If you don't want to be there, you're going to go hide in an office somewhere. And that's not what I want. I was one of them. I was there because I cared about the kids. I interacted with the kids. I got involved with programs with the kids. But yeah, we can all say, oh, let's go get school resource officers, let's put them in every school, fine and dandy, but if he's in the closet when somebody walks in, what are we going to do then? We're missing the point here, people. What is the root cause? It all starts at home, is the root cause. We have no morals in this society. We're not teaching our kids right from wrong. Nobody fears anything anymore. Nobody fears God. Yeah, I said it. I'm sure I'll be on national news for bringing up God at a school board meeting, but nobody fears him anymore. No kids fear him. I feared God. Why is it that when I was in school, I could carry one in the back of my pickup truck? And now you can't? Why? What's happened? Go back and research it. I say all this because I get frustrated because the school board gets blamed, or I get emails, what are you going to do to stop school violence? What are parents going to do to start training their kids to be good citizens? We don't need these kids out here low in morale, low in, don't feel like they're nothing, that they feel like, oh, the only way I'm going to get recognized in this world is go shoot up a school, and I'll go shoot up a school, and then everybody know who I am. Everybody knows who that shooter was in Texas. Everybody. Nobody knows who got killed. Thank you, media. Please, put this all over your media. Stop it. They're not heroes. They're kids with mental illnesses. I just wanted to get that off my chest. I'm sorry that I took up the extra time, but it's been boiling at me ever since, I'm not the fix. This school board's not the fix. I taught school safety. I went around, after Columbine, I went around to every school that the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office was responsible for, and I taught the drills. Is that going to stop it? No. We're just teaching them to get in and hide or run. That's not going to stop it. We, as a board, can do what we can want to do, or we can do some of the things we want to do, but is an SRO in every school going to stop it? No. I know that ain't what everybody wants to hear, and I'll probably get hate mail, emails when I get home, and that's okay. At least I told you the truth.
I'm still, I'm going back to our meetings. We need to go back to two meetings a month and be transparent to our people, and let our people know what we're doing, and there's some things we can't talk about, but they are things that we can, and the business and how we're spending your tax dollars. So I'm still, I'll push for that until I'm out. So I would, I guess that's it.
Ms. Green?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to all the 2022 graduates. We were able to go out to the graduations and celebrate them. The counting, the students of the 2022 class got billions of dollars, I mean, millions of dollars in scholarships, and that's great. But I also want to take this time to say congratulations to the ones that may not have been at the award ceremonies or did not get the big scholarships, that just barely got out of school, but they're out of school, and now they're starting their career in whatever job they want. No matter how you did it, if you did it at the top of your class or the bottom of your class, we're still proud of you that you were able to graduate and go on to the next step in life. Thanks.
Mr. Taylor?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time. Ms. Green stole a little bit of my thunder there. I do congratulate all the 2022 graduates. Attending graduations, one of the fun things that we get to do, to see the kids coming across stage and the different expressions, and you can tell the ones that are, you know, they're ready to go, and some just glad to be here. So it's, it was fun to do that. And Ms. Green, I think the total is around 9.7 million in scholarships for our high school seniors, and I think that's the largest amount, but with a smaller class this year. So the scholarship per student ratio is pretty good. So next, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, subsection 8, I move that we go into closed session to discuss confidential school safety plan issues.
Before we get a second, I would like for you to add subsection A1.
Okay.
To discuss confidential student matters, so we can get an update on the situation presented earlier. That gives us opportunity to talk if we can get some information.
Okay. Then I'll admit my motion to include A8 and also A1.
Yep, that's in accordance with FERB. Is there a second to that?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Shores, second by Mr. Fitch. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. And that carries nine zero. All right. All right, we'll adjourn to the conference room. Okay, board members, do we have a motion to re-enter open session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shores, second by Mr. Glover. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. During closed session, the board did discuss confidential safety plans and a confidential student matter, there were no actions taken. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion. Thank you, folks.